The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening and welcome to Weyburn City Council for September 23rd, 2024. Before we get started, I'll make note that Mayor Roy is unavailable tonight, so we'll go on. First off is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting as strategic planning and priority meeting held September 9th. We have a motion for that.
Your worship, I move that the minutes of the regular council meeting and the SP&amp;P meeting, September 9th, 2024, be accepted as presented. Thank you.
A seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carried. The agenda, any additions to the agenda?
Your worship, there's no additions tonight from administration.
Counsel? None? We get a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please?
I will move that the agenda be accepted as presented. Thank you.
A seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Very good. All in favor? Good. Okay, so no public hearings or notices on next to delegations, proclamations, and petitions. And as is pretty standard this time of year, it's one of my favorite proclamations, so I get to read this one. I was pretty excited when I seen it today. So I'll read the proclamation first, and then we'll invite you folks up to tell us some more, okay? So, the proclamation is as such, "Whereas the Weyburn Communiton has helped local community agencies in Weyburn and the surrounding area for over 40 years by raising funds and awareness leading up to and during an annual live televised event during which performers from the area showcase their talents. This event has become a tradition in Weyburn. It's driven by passionate volunteers from our community, support from local businesses, and assistance from representatives of the community agencies being supported. The Weyburn Communiton is proud to be hosting Fall in Love with Communiton featuring the theme 'It's Our Time.' This year's Communiton will help support Big Brothers and Big Sisters Weyburn, Canadian Mental Health Association, CNIB Foundation, Envision Counseling and Support, Inclusion Weyburn, Southeast Advocates for Employment, Spinal Court Injury Saskatchewan, and the Weyburn Caravan. The majority of funds that are raised by the Communiton stay in our community by supporting our community agencies, which then invest those funds into their programs and services. Therefore, I, Jeff Richards, Deputy Mayor of the City of Weyburn, do hereby proclaim October 2024 on the occasion of the 43rd Communiton as Communiton Month." Okay, and I'd like to invite Linda Rideout up. You've got some words to share.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's our time to help out Communiton once again. I'm thrilled to speak to you today about our annual community fundraiser, the Weyburn Communiton, and I would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to Deputy Mayor Richards and the rest of the council for proclaiming October as Communiton Month. Your support helps shine a spotlight on the importance of our cause and inspires our community to come together. We have a fun-filled day planned, complete with some new surprises that we'll be revealing in the coming weeks, so watch for some exciting announcements that will make this year's Communiton even more memorable. However, to ensure this day is a success, we need help. We are actively recruiting volunteers to join our planning committee, whether you can lend a hand in the weeks leading up to the event, or be there on October 25th. Your contributions will make a huge difference. If you're passionate about giving back to our community, please consider joining us. Together, we can create an unforgettable experience for everyone.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Raven. I did acknowledge you, but Raven Dare also went there. Do you want to take a picture? Yeah? Okay. Betts' first-ever solo, so everybody should be out for that. Yeah, exactly.
That would be a very large surprise.
All right. Let's keep going. No reports of standing committees, so next up will be the consent agenda. The only item on the consent agenda is the cash activity report for the month of August. Kind of a motion for that, please?
Yes, your worship. I'll make a motion that the following item on the consent agenda be approved, cash activity report for August.
Seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you. And so, any discussion? Nope. And all in favor? Carried. Okay. We'll go on now to introductions of bylaws, and we have quite a bit of work to do around our waterworks today. So we'll turn this over to our Director of Engineering for more information.
Thanks, your worship. So the City of Weyburn has a Waterworks Bylaw 2007-3088 and Sewer Service Bylaw 2007-3089 that regulate and levy fees or charges for the utility services. On September 9th, 2024, council gave first readings to Bylaw 2024-3485 and Bylaw 2024-3486. The City of Weyburn currently has water and sewer rates established until December 31st, 2024. The City of Weyburn provides the following utility services: water and sewer for the City of Weyburn, water for the Weyburn Utility Board, and water and sewer for North Weyburn. Utility rates are designed to cover the operations, treatment, storage, and distribution, and capital projects related to water quality and regulatory requirements. All operations for utilities are funded through utility fees and utility grants. Taxation does not contribute to the cost of utilities. The water and wastewater service charges are based on water meter. The water, wastewater, and infrastructure volumetric charges are based on consumption. The base charge is to ensure a certain minimum revenue to deliver the service. The below table shows the current utility rates from January 1st, 2024, based on your meter size. Note, the environmental landfill decommissioning and recycling fee are part of the refuse bylaw. These rate increases were approved and implemented January 1st, 2024. The table below is representing the capital expenditures from 2019 all the way until some planned up until 2026. And then the table also below shows the sewer system capital costs. Then we have the table of the water usage. It's showing the City of Weyburn water usage data from June 1st, 2019 to May 31st, 2024. The Engineering Department has conducted a full review of both utility bylaws and are proposing the following changes: waterworks, we have language updated to be gender neutral, Section 9, updated properties listed, Section 56, the removal of excluding Section 55, Section 64, repeal current bylaw, and Schedule A, the rates. The water rates per cubic meter are shown below. The proposed water base charge per month are shown below, per water meter size. Water and sewer connection fund proposed rates are below that. Proposed changes for sewer services: the language update to be gender neutral, Section 9, updated properties are listed, Section 25, removal of and exclusive of charges made for lawn and garden watering as provided for under Bylaw Number 2007-3088, referred to as the Waterworks Bylaw, Section 49, repeal current bylaw and Schedule A rates. The tables below show the proposed sewer rates per cubic meter, and below that, the sewer base charge per month based on water meter size, January 2025 to January 2027. The following is an example of the monthly charges for a City of Weyburn property with a 5/8 utility service. So there will be a $6.68 increase per month in January 2025, and then that rate increases to $7.23 for 2026 and 2027. Public notice was published in accordance with the city's public notice policy. Notices were advertised in the September 11th and 18th edition of the Weyburn Review, posted at City Hall and on the city's website. No responses were received. Recommendation: that council give second and third readings and pass Bylaw 2024-3485, being a bylaw to regulate the use of waterworks and the levying of fees or charges. That council give second and third readings and pass Bylaw 2024-3486, being a bylaw to regulate the use of sewer service and the levying and fees or charges. That council gives first, second, and third readings to repeal Bylaw 2007-3088, being a bylaw to regulate the use of waterworks and the levying of fees or charges, and Bylaw 2007-3089, being a bylaw to regulate the use of sewer service and the levying of fees or charges.
A lot of motions we've got to make now. I would like to thank you for that, because I want to make sure that I get this right now. So we're going to do, we've already done first reading on the Waterworks Bylaw. We have done first reading on the Sewer Service Bylaw, so we're going to do second and third on those, carry them, and then the motion to repeal the existing bylaw, the old bylaw, I suppose. We will do first, second, then a motion to allow for the third reading, and then the motion of the third reading. Did I get that right?
Yep, that's correct.
All right. I should give peppermint or something at some point. Okay, so before we start conversation on this, let's get a motion on the floor to approve the new Waterworks Bylaw.
Your worship, I would move that council give second reading for Bylaw 2024-3485, being a bylaw to regulate the use of waterworks and the levying of fees.
Thank you. Any seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you. Okay, any questions or commentary on the work to this point?
Nothing over above what you have already said. Great work. A lot of effort and complicated minutia goes into these, so appreciate somebody else figuring that out so that we don't have to go through every little line of it, but...
Thanks, Counselor Jenke. Yeah, I would reiterate that. A lot of hard work, but we appreciate your department's work, and it is what it is. $6.68 a month is an increase. Sorry, Counselor Higgs, is certainly a reasonable increase.
Yeah, and I think that, like to emphasize, the section of the capital investments and the ongoing costs to operating safe and secure water be highlighted, because it's a huge, huge budgetary item, but yeah, we've got to have safe water.
We've got to have safe water. Very good. All right, motions on the floor. All in favor? Carried.
Your worship, I would move that council give a third reading and pass Bylaw 2024-3485, being a bylaw to regulate the use of waterworks and the levying of fees or charges.
I will second that, your worship.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? That is passed. Now, I don't, we can just do the next one. We don't need a presentation. It's all in the same, very good. So if we could get second reading for the Sewer Service Bylaw?
I will take care of that, your worship. I make the motion that council give second reading for Bylaw 2024-3486, a bylaw to regulate the use of sewer service and the levying of fees or charges.
A seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Higgs?
I just want to clarify, the, only the regulator, or the cost of usage has gone up. Everything else remains the same as far as our repair of sewer lines to the homes and the water lines to the homes and all that stuff, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Anything else? If not, call the question. All in favor? Carry.
I'd like to make the motion that council give the third reading and pass Bylaw 2024-3486, being a bylaw to regulate the use of sewer service and the levying of fees or charges.
A seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Any discussion? None? All in favor? Carried. Okay, now we need to repeal the old bylaw, so I would look for a motion to do that.
Your worship, I move that council give first reading to Bylaw 2024-3488, being a bylaw to repeal Bylaw 2024-3485 and Bylaw 2024-3486, both bylaws that regulate the use of waterworks and sewer and the levying of fees.
Great. A seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you. So is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Then move that we give second reading to Bylaw 2024-3488, being a bylaw to repeal 2024-3485 and 2024-3486, bylaws that regulate the use of waterworks and sewer service and the levying of fees thereof.
Get a seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Any discussion? No. All in favor? Keep going.
I move that council agrees to a third reading of Bylaw 2024-3488 tonight.
I'll second that, your worship.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor?
And finally, I move that Bylaw 2024-3488, being a bylaw to repeal 2024-3485 and 2024-3486, bylaws that regulate the use of waterworks, sewer service, and the levying of fees thereof, be given a third reading tonight and passed.
A seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you. I'll ask one last time. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Thank you. That was a good piece of work. I appreciate it. No unfinished business, so we will go on to new business, and first item on the agenda is the potential changes to our October, pardon me?
Sorry, worship.
Did I miss one?
No, I, there was just an error on the motions for repealing the bylaws. We had them, it was said to repeal the new bylaw numbers as opposed to the old bylaw numbers, so we needed to repeal 2007-3088 and 3089 instead of 2024-3485 and 86.
I will concede, I thought that was strange, but just read it verbatim.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Since those are, as a point of order, since those are non-existent bylaws, do we need to rescind the motion we just made, or is that null and void because there's nothing, because they don't do anything?
Well, we don't want to repeal the bylaws that we just passed, so...
Oh, those, they are right bylaws.
Yeah. So you said we're repealing the bylaws that we just passed, but I think we need to re, yeah, we'll need to rescind that and read it over with the proper bylaw numbers.
I can certainly do that. Shall I rescind all four, or can I do them all in one motion? I'm going to take your hesitation as you'd like me to do them all.
Yeah, I think, I think that would probably be best.
Well, at this point, the joke works better if I do, so... All right, I'll do my best here. Which order? Do I do them in reverse order? I think you'd do one, two, like first reading, second reading, then the motion for the third, then the third. All right, we'll do it like that.
Your worship, I move that council repeal the motion, or sorry, rescind the motion which stated to repeal bylaws 2024 and 2020, 2024-3485 and 2024-3486, bylaws regulating the use of sewer and waterworks and the levying of fees thereof, for first reading tonight.
A seconder?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
I would like to rescind a previous motion to give second reading to Bylaw 2024-3488, being a bylaw to repeal 2024-3485 and 2024-3486, bylaws that regulate waterworks and sewer service and levying of fees.
Seconder?
I'll second that also.
Any discussion? I would think not, but I'll ask. Good. All in favor?
I will skip the third reading, because that seems immaterial, or the, to allow for third reading, and go right to, I'd like to rescind the motion to give third reading and pass Bylaw 2024-3488, being a bylaw to repeal 2024-3485 and Bylaw 2024-3486, bylaws to regulate the use of waterworks and sewer service and the levying of fees.
I'll second that, your worship.
Okay, all in favor? So those motions are off the books now, rescinded. So now, Tina, you will want us to go through all four of those motions, but with the other bylaw numbers.
Correct.
And do you have those, Counselor Jenke?
I do have those. My only question on the matter is, is the wording on the bylaw correct? Like, can I use the same bylaw number in this motion?
Yes, the wording on the bylaw is correct. It's just the numbers are wrong.
All right. Counselor Van Betts, I brought your pen, so I don't actually read them wrong again. And it is 2017...
2007.
2007, 3089.
3088, and then 3089.
I will try this again. I move that council give first reading to Bylaw 2024-3488, being a bylaw to repeal bylaws 2007-3088 and 2007-3089, bylaws that regulate the use of waterworks and sewer service and the levying of fees thereof.
A seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
All right. All in favor? Carried.
I then move that we give second reading to Bylaw 2024-3488, being a bylaw to repeal bylaws 20, 2007-3088 and 2007-3089, bylaws that regulate the use of waterworks, sewer service, and the levying of fees.
A seconder?
2007, not 2024. You said 2024, sorry.
Let me try that again. I thought I said 2007, but I'm not going to argue with you, Larry. I move that council give second reading to Bylaw 2024-3488.
2007.
No, this one is...
Oh, sorry, that's right.
The bylaw we're reading right now is 2024.
Yeah.
The one we're repealing is 2007.
Yes, sorry.
All right. I'm going to start it again anyway. I move that council give second reading to Bylaw 2024-3488, being a bylaw to repeal 2007-3088 and 2007-3089, bylaws that regulate the use of waterworks and sewer service and the levying of fees.
I'll second that, your worship.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
I feel like this one's already on the books, but I'll do it anyway. I move that council gives a third reading, or sixth reading, as the case may be, to Bylaw 2024-3488 today.
Seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
All in favor?
And finally, that council give third reading and pass Bylaw 2024-3488, being a bylaw to repeal 2007-3088 and 2007-3089, bylaws that regulate the use of waterworks, sewer service, and the levying of fees thereof.
I'll second that, your worship.
Although there's been ample opportunity, I'll ask one more time. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Well done.
Carried. Thank you, Counselor Jenke. That was twice as much work, but it was good, good practice. Okay, let's move on to new business. We do have a proposed change to our October council meeting schedules, so turn that over to our city clerk.
Okay, so the Council of Procedures Bylaw states that the regular meeting of councils should be held on the second and fourth Monday of every month unless otherwise directed by council by a resolution at a preceding council meeting. In November 2023, a council meeting schedule was approved for 2024. The summer schedule was updated, and the November 12th and December 23rd council meetings were canceled. With municipal elections scheduled for November 13th, it's important to note the nominations will take place from September 25th to October 9th. Following the close of nominations and prior to the election, council meetings are set for October 15th and 28th. Given the preparation required for the election and the possibility of council members announcing the reelection plans, it would be in everyone's best interest to cancel the October 28th meeting. I recommend that council cancels the October 28th council meeting.
Do we have a motion?
Your worship, I'd make the motion that council cancel the October 28th, 2024 regular council meeting.
Seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thanks, Counselor Morrison. Any commentary, questions? Counselor Jenke?
I accept this recommendation. It does seem to me entirely inappropriate to be having a council meeting during what would be a campaign period. I mean, no other level of government would ever consider this, and I think it was simply an oversight on our part that this was ever approved, so it's just a matter of correction oversight in my opinion.
Anybody else? Tina, it would be, I think if we looked at other cities in Saskatchewan, we would find a very similar pattern. Is that right?
Yeah, correct. So Estevan, actually, their last council meeting is today, and then Regina, they have October 9th, Saskatoon, September 25th. Most other municipalities are having one meeting after nominations closed, and then that's it. So that's kind of where we're at with nominations close October 9th, and then our last council meeting would be October 15th.
Okay. Right. Just to be clear, this would not prevent us from calling it an emergency meeting if so required.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any more questions or thoughts? There's motions on the floor. I'll call the question. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Tina. And thanks for your work, your research on that as well. Okay, we'll turn the next item as budget timelines, because of course, which is obvious now, we are in, it will be in the election cycle here through October and November, which will change some things in operation. So the city manager has a report on some changes to the budget timelines from usual.
Yep, thanks, your worship. So the City of Weyburn has a policy that establishes the guidelines and responsibilities for annual budget processes, so it's under Resolution 2017-12C. The policy establishes key responsibilities and timelines for the budget process. So every year, city council, city manager, and city staff work together to develop an annual budget. The budget serves as an outline for how money that comes into the city should be spent to maintain and improve the city. As the city is limited by the number of resources available, the budget helps in determining which objectives have the highest priority and will produce the greatest positive impact in the community. So the City of Weyburn develops a yearly balanced operating capital budget to provide growth and sustainability today and into the future. A balanced budget means money spent must equal money raised. To balance a budget, the city can either increase its revenues through other property taxes and fees, or through reducing expenses and cost of services. The operating budget covers day-to-day spending on services such as recreation programs, garbage collection, parks maintenance, storm removal, and emergency services. The operating budget also includes yearly projects to improve city-owned infrastructure to help make Weyburn a safe, convenient, and livable community. The capital budget is a city's plan to purchase, build, maintain, repair, and replace assets including fleet, roads, water and wastewater systems, and public buildings such as our recreation and arts facilities, our public works facilities, the fire station, the police station, and our parks. There are several main sources of funding for municipalities. Budget initiatives can receive funding from a single source, but majority are funded through multiple different sources. So here's an example of some of the sources we have. We have property taxes, our rates and fees, grants, our development charges, internal reserves, if required, debt, which would be external loans. So, his worship, tonight discussed there's some changes to our budget. So, His Worship, tonight to discuss are some changes to our budget, and this is in lieu just because of our municipal election happening on November thirteenth, to assist with the development of the twenty twenty-five budget that follows our proposed timelines. So on December ninth, we would look at having our prelim budget presented at council meeting. So the department budget presentations are made by myself and the department heads. And then the director of finance develops the proposal report and provide our impacts and summaries of that budget. Much like we did last year, which I felt was really beneficial to help the budget process and to inform the community more on our budget processes, to look at having open house. So we look at having that sometime between December tenth and twenty-first, and that location be announced at a later date. It would provide, again, more information, understanding, and then discussion on that prelim budget that was presented. They're allowed to have a drop-in and obtain information from the members of their public on what they see within that budget. For us, it's always an opportunity for council and staff to have an opportunity to speak to our public. It's also an opportunity for the public to familiarize themselves more with our budget, understand more about operations, and be more informed about intentions for the twenty twenty-five budget. Again, the location to be determined. Advertising on details would be through our city website and sent through Weyburn Alerts, which -- and our city's notification system, which is powered through VoYant. And then within budget, on January thirteenth of twenty twenty-five, we'd have a follow-up discussion about budget with input received from the public, opportunity for delegations, our individual or organizations to appear before council, and then further discussion and direction from council to administration on the budget. So the current municipal budget, we have a web page we've established for this. If people from the public are wanting to know more about our current budget, there's information still located on that with our presentation from this year. Our plan would be to provide our budget timelines, open house information, and when the preliminary budget is done, to be all posted on that site. And also included would be a meeting video, so we work with access communications. We would have that video up on that site. And the plan would have that updated pretty quick after that December ninth meeting. An open budget process offers citizens an opportunity to learn more about municipal budget processes, provide input on priorities, and influence the allocation of public resources. Transparent, inclusive budgeting facilitates citizens' understanding of issues and government processes, ensures transparency and accountability, and improves the quality of decisions made and increases the support for the decisions made. So again, I have a breakdown of all the times I discussed with the dates that would occur, the milestone within that, and who's responsible for each one of those timelines all the way through. So I am recommending to council tonight that city council approves the two thousand twenty-five budget timelines as presented.
Thank you. So do we have a motion?
Your Worship, I'd make the motion that city council approve the twenty twenty-five budget timelines as presented.
Okay, seconder?
I will second that, Your Worship.
Thanks, Laura. Discussion? Questions? Laura?
Thanks, Your Worship. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the department heads and city administration for getting the reports and budget requests in early so that we, as the outgoing council, can set the incoming counselors on a positive path in passing the twenty twenty-five budget. I remember being elected in twenty twenty, and it was really daunting voting on a budget so quickly after being elected. So I think that our administration has done a fantastic job in setting the twenty twenty-five budget up for success. So thank you again.
Well said. Anything else? Nope. So it sounds like what you're looking for from us is a motion to approve these dates as presented. This will not -- like, one of the things that I know that we started here a number of years back was moving the budget all the way back into the preceding year, like, but and a lot of that was so that engineering, for example, could get RFPs out the door a little bit earlier. So do you feel like this is gonna have a big impact on that process? It's only a few weeks, so...
Yeah, the only change for this, Your Worship, is last year we approved our budget in December. This pushes us back by a month. You know, I've been within the municipality for a number of years, and I've been here when we've had even later approvals for budget. And with the amount of really important infrastructure projects that have been occurring from all of our departments, it's really imperative that we look at a timeline much like this to get a budget done so we can get those RFPs out, get those projects started. Again, it is pretty tight compared to where the municipal election is, but we are looking forward as administration to working with whomever's part of council to support them and to help provide them some information they require throughout the budget process.
Okay. Thank you. If there's nothing more, we'll call the question. All in favor? Carried. All right. One more piece of new business, and that is some repairs out at the lagoon. Turn that over to the director of engineering.
Thanks, Your Worship. So the engineering department has budgeted two hundred thousand for the repair of the berms at the secondary lagoon treatment cells under the twenty twenty-four general operating fund in the utilities budget. The southeast berms of cell one and cell two are eroding from the constant wave action and have been identified as a risk for a potential sewage bypass if not repaired. The work will consist of repairing the berms with approximately three hundred cubes of compacted clay, woven geotextile, and the placement of one hundred and fifty-millimeter to three hundred-millimeter riprap stone. On September fifth, twenty twenty-four, a request for proposal was posted on the city's online bidding portal, bids and tenders, SaaS tenders, and the city's website. Proposals were to be received by the city of Weyburn by September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four at one P.M., and a total of two proposals were received. Below is the summary of the proposals, or the bid prices. Two zero four two eight nine six Alberta Limited proposed sixty-one thousand one hundred, and GB Construction proposed ninety-nine thousand five hundred. The proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders understood the scope of work involved, had similar project experience, the required qualifications, and to ensure the project delivery schedule could be met. Both of the proposals met the requirements. It is recommended that the twenty twenty-four Lagoon Dyke repairs be awarded to two zero four two eight nine six Alberta Limited for sixty-one thousand one hundred dollars excluding taxes.
Thanks, Renee. Motion?
Your Worship, I'll make the motion that the Lagoon Dyke repairs be awarded to two zero four two eight nine six Alberta Limited for sixty-one thousand one hundred dollars including excluding taxes.
Right. A seconder?
I'll second that motion, Your Worship.
Thank you. Okay, questions? Laura?
Thanks, Your Worship. Renee, I know I posed this question to you earlier. We always like to make sure that Saskatchewan companies have a fair chance at getting the bids. Is there a reason why Alberta Limited might be a little bit less expensive?
Yeah, so the Alberta Limited company is significantly smaller in size than the Saskatchewan company, so they have significantly lower overhead costs. They propose slightly smaller-sized equipment to do the work, so also a little bit reduced rates. So that's about why.
Thank you.
Laura?
This isn't a staged repair. This is a one-time repair. That's the goal, at least. Budgeted two hundred thousand come in at sixty-one, so that's a win. Is that how I'm reading it?
Yeah, that's correct. It's definitely a win. There is more banks eventually to repair. We just took the -- we prioritized where it really needed to be done to fit in within budget, so...
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Anybody else? Council Jenke?
Can you just reassure us that we are confident that the, I guess, the numbered company whose bid is forty percent less than the name company is qualified to do this? If it ever came that they weren't, the optics of that are not great, so...
Yes, they have very similar project experience. They qualify for sure.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Anything else? My only question is timeframe for this, this fall yet?
Yes, so they -- it needs to be done. It's a regulatory requirement from Water Security Agency, and it needs to be done this fall when that cell is dry.
Okay. Thanks. If there's nothing else, we'll call the question. All in favor? Carried. Let's move on. Inquiries and announcements. Laura?
Thank you, Worship. I just want to remind everybody that nominations are still currently open for the twenty twenty-five Walk of Fame. I know it's early September, but I have a feeling that Christmas is going to be here before we know it. So if you know of somebody that is nationally recognized, there are all sorts of criteria on the city of Weyburn website, and then you can follow the link to the Walk of Fame webpage. But definitely get those nominations in. And then, as always, we are looking for new committee members, and we'd love to have you join for twenty twenty-five.
Thanks, Laura. Council Higgs?
Again, Renee, I looked at you with my questions. Sixteenth Street. I guess I'd just update on progress and how things are coming and what you expect.
Thank you. Sixteenth Street is progressing good. They had a little delay, major, not major, minor delays from weather. They still should be on track to finish in the next couple of weeks. So providing we have good weather for another few weeks, we should be looking at getting curbing and asphalt repairs done before winter as well.
Council Gordon?
And Renee, could you update us on Railway Avenue also?
Yep. The water main on Railway Avenue is complete. They are now just repairing two storm lines on Ninth and Tenth Street. The asphalt company, Jenko Asphalt, is mobilized to town and starting prep work on some of the water main trench, and they'll start milling next week to do paving by the end of next week and the following week.
Thank you very much.
We'll do another one if you want. Yeah?
I'd like to take this opportunity to announce my intention to seek reelection in the upcoming municipal election coming up. It's been an honor to serve the citizens of Weyburn over the last four years, and I think we're headed in a really great direction, and I'd love to be a part of that. So thank you for that opportunity.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, our announcements, inquiries?
I have one more.
Council Higgs?
I think this one I'll direct to afterwards. Matthew, just in regards to the swimming pool, any updates on that process and where we're at with getting it back up online?
Yeah, thanks, Council Higgs. No update on timelines. Right now, our leisure service department and our facilities department is working really closely with structural engineers to gain more information on the pool structure and to find more information on that. It's top of mind for us, and it's a really important thing for us to have identified, but we want to make sure we do all the proper, you know, steps to ensure that we can figure out where the issue is occurring and to make sure that if the work that needs to be done is identified, it's identified in a proper manner. So for us to work with a structural engineer, it's really important for us to have us, you know, have them provide the key steps that we have to move forward. But as of right now, there's no timeframe, but it's really important for us to have a timely, you know, response and have everything fixed as soon as we can once we have that information from them. Thank you.
Council Morissette?
Ooh, one more time. I'd like to take this opportunity to pick on our director of engineering one more time. A road that I take every day, that seven-eleven corner and the -- what was the four-way stop at Sixteenth Street? I see lights going in there, and that's very exciting.
Yes, it's very exciting. They should be in operation by tomorrow. So, yeah.
A couple more things, just in conversations with the director of engineering. We sure would like to thank folks and ask everybody to continue to use extreme caution at the intersection of Sixteenth and Cottle, where it's a little bit restricted, the traffic's a little restricted. That'll come to an end soon enough, but it's a necessary evil for the time being. And then finally, I would like to just personally congratulate Shane St. John on his appointment to the position of deputy chief of police with the Weyburn Police Service. And Chief Fannecite made that announcement the other day. I think that's exciting. That puts a lot of experience in the leadership team at our police service. I'm excited to see that as well. And then I think that's everything. There's no notice of motion, so we will adjourn the meeting at six forty-four. Thank you.
If you'd like to share your feedback on the program you just watched, contact us today.